Time being seven o'clock, I'll call the Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. First, agenda item, plans not requiring subdivision approval, we have none. Go down to action items, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Any issues? Anyone see any issue?
No.
Maybe none? We'll do the roll call.
I vote aye.
Christine?
Aye.
I will abstain.
Aye.
Alright.
And I vote aye. Carrie. Before we get into the continued public hearing history of states, a couple of the board members need to complete missing meeting paperwork so they can vote on this project. You tell me who they are, they know it, if they know it.
Oh, they're right in the front of the folder.
Oh.
Christine and this one is Craig's.
Okay.
Okay. You go pass them down. It's yours, that was Craig's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, time being seven oh five, we have a continued public hearing on history of states. Everyone received the desk new plans, updates from Graves. Basically, most things were resolved. What we should do tonight is, and Tony on their new plans, they have the waivers on the front page. So what we have to do is go through the waivers, make sure it's okay with all the board members. List of the requested waivers, number one was the road, the length of roadway, five hundred feet in our subdivision rules and regulations, the proposed length is eight hundred and forty feet, including the existing small portion of history drive. My feeling is that's, it's not outrageous for a length of a cul-de-sac. Besides that, water, water is being supplied to hydrants and whatnot. That's usually the reason for the cul-de-sac and the amount of lots. They've literally reduced it from fifteen to fourteen lots now. So.
Right. Yeah, I don't have.
You don't have a problem, how about you Christine?
No.
No problem, okay. Great, great.
No problem.
No problem?
Nope.
No problem?
No objection.
No objection, Mark?
No issue.
No issue, Matthew. The second one is four lots on a cul-de-sac and they say six lots proposed, that's what's on the plan. I look at the plan, I only, I can only see four.
I see, well, I see the bit because it's.
Just a little corner of the lot is on.
I don't know enough about why that is, why they have four or not.
We want to restrict how small the, the frontage guard around the cul-de-sac. Based upon the construction of a cul-de-sac, it was determined four, okay? But they've only got a corner that, about that, a cul-de-sac. I only see four, okay? And one of them is a fifty foot right away for the back lot.
So is this, at the end of this cul-de-sac, is it more round, is it larger in diameter, the circle at the end of the cul-de-sac is larger than a normal?
No, it's a typical.
Typical.
It's a typical.
Typical.
I mean, I guess technically there is four, I just, the two last lots before you get to it.
A little bit of, I see the little, yeah.
I didn't want to not put them on and say, oh, well, those are touching the cul-de-sac too.
Well, they are touching, it's just the corner. You didn't reduce the frontage of those lots.
I was just gonna say, it doesn't affect the driveway placements or anything like that, it's not like there's no other easement.
So, anyone have an objection to the amount of lots that are on that cul-de-sac?
I do.
You do?
Yep. And the reason by law says four. And they can make it conform to four.
Oh, that's a zoning bylaw. Is that a zoning bylaw?
No, subdivision.
If it meets the minimum frontage, does it count or no? Because those two lots do meet the minimum, twenty-five feet of frontage, so I guess technically those wouldn't count.
That's, that's, that's kind of my opinion. That's why I look at that. I know you included those two lots, but there's no reason to.
Doesn't affect, it doesn't affect.
Well, you gave him, you gave him the board.
We can have them change that. Okay, so you're saying that you don't see any reason to violate.
Well, we gave him, we gave him a longer roadway, right? To get deeper into the project.
Yeah.
Okay? And, and even with three hundred extra feet on the roadway, they need a waiver to make the cul-de-sac work.
I don't know, maybe this is a good time, Jason, why don't you come up here and discuss your plan a little bit?
There's only three lots that actually have a reduced frontage on the cul-de-sac. So I basically counted, you know, any lot that was touching the cul-de-sac as part of it. So the, this one, this one, this large one, this one, this is the reduced, you know, the rear lot one, and then this one.
It's still fifty feet, even though it's reduced, you still have fifty feet for the.
This one has sixty-five point nine two.
Okay.
This one actually has a hundred and twenty-five, that has a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
That one is ninety-seven, this one actually, since we combine these two, this, this has a hundred and forty, and then this one has seventy, so it's, it's technically just one, two, three that have reduced frontage.
That's the reason it was put on there for a cul-de-sac point of view was to, so they wouldn't reduce the, the frontage down to less, less than a reasonable amount for a driveway and whatnot.
It's a confusing bylaw. I thought it was just the minimum lots on the cul-de-sac period, I didn't realize there was a frontage issue.
Well, no, no, they, but that's the reason why, there's a four, there's a minimum of four, there has to be a max of four, because by, over that, you'd be reducing the frontage even more. We're gonna be, we're gonna be addressing our subdivision rules and regulations down the road here, so we'll, we'll look into the language on that.
I can rewrite the cover sheet to just be three.
That's good, because that's what it probably will come down to, so.
That's what's basically gone, yes, there's three that are on the cul-de-sac.
So, Mark doesn't want to give you a waiver on that, so he wants it to maintain at four lots.
Well, I'm just, I'm just one member.
You're just one member.
No, no, that's okay.
And I kind of think that's all he's got anyway, four lots on that cul-de-sac.
Depends what, I mean, isn't there actually six lots on the cul-de-sac that touch the part, touch the beginning of the cul-de-sac? One, two, three, four, five, six, yep.
It's a matter of interpretation. I, I look at it, those two lots that touch it in the corner gets, is the corners on it, literally have the hundred and twenty-five feet required by the, by zoning anyway.
So they have a hundred and twenty-five feet before the cul-de-sac, is that what you're saying?
The two, the two, the two that are before, the two in front of it, yes, yes, yes.
So you're saying they have a hundred and twenty-five feet without including the, no they don't.
No, it's part, no, it's part of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, I see. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, well, let's, I'm gonna do a straw vote, see if they want to allow it or not allow it. That'll affect their plan on the end of that cul-de-sac, so.
I vote to allow it.
Okay. Christine?
I vote to allow it.
I think I'm gonna go with Mark on this one.
No, you're not, okay. Roger?
Allow it.
Roger can't vote.
Oh, he missed too many.
Missed two meetings, so can't participate.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, okay. Well, we're just doing a head count here to see what's going on with, we still gotta vote. After we get everything said and done, we still gotta vote on this thing down the road anyway. What do you say, Matthew? I mean, I guess the, the feeling is, Matthew, you weren't here for the entire thing, but I'm, I'm interested in your feedback anyway.
It's not, this is just a straw.
I, I would be more concerned if there were more driveways on the actual cul-de-sac than there are. I mean, there are five, technically, one's being the back lot there. I mean, I, I would lean towards allowing a waiver, but, I mean, some of these, it just seems like the lot lines could be redrawn slightly to comply better.
At least get rid of that one on, what, what lot is that one?
Lot ten?
Ten.
Yeah.
Ten has so little on there, you know?
That was an easement.
That's a large piece of backland, though, without that, there's no access to all the backland. And actually, there's only four driveways on the cul-de-sac, not five.
I missed them. Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, even though those touch the, their driveway's gonna be on the main road itself, not the cul-de-sac. Either of those two lots on either side, that's why I was kind of thinking, well, you know, they weren't quite on the cul-de-sac, because their driveway and everything else are on the road. Okay, so, and my feeling is I would allow it in this case, they've already, they've already reduced the density of those lots by combining two lots together already. So, you know where the board stands on that one. Number three, the reinforced concrete pipe drainage, pipe required, we do have a email from the DPW.
He was okay with it.
Allows the use of, allows the use of the high-density polypropylene pipe, so. Everyone okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
As strong as he's okay with it.
Yep, Jeff was okay with it.
You're okay, Craig, yeah?
Yep. DPW, it's up to him.
Yep.
He's gotta fix it, so. He's gotta fix it.
And he was okay with it.
Yeah, well, that's gonna go into our rewrite of the rules and regulations.
Yeah, it seems to be their common use now, is that type of pipe, so.
Okay, Roger, you okay with you? I know you can't vote, but you still have a say too.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Mark, okay? With the pipe?
Yep.
Okay? Matthew?
Yep.
Okay. And number four is the NGVD nineteen twenty-nine vertical datum required, the new standard is NAVD eighty-eight, datum is used. And that's something else we're gonna address in our subdivision rules and regulation to get up to date, so. Everyone okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
This is an abomination.
You guys probably, we wish, no, no, you don't know what that means.
Back to nineteen twenty-nine.
You know what that means, Greg? I'm fine with it.
Okay, everyone okay?
Yes.
All right, you got your waivers all set, okay?
Well, I got two.
They gotta, you should think.
Three out of, three out of four.
Yeah, three out of four. Well, the majority of us said it would be as stands anyway. Anyway, Tony, you asked if the applicant could present, do you have issues that you want him to talk about?
Well, I have provided the, the most revised plans that the applicant submitted, and sorry, Mr. Chair, if this is the time, we could have the applicant go through the plans for everyone's benefit.
Let the public see it too.
Yep.
Can I just talk, talk about the layout?
It's all yours. Yeah. All the sheets are.
So I'll just start at the layout plans here to just kind of show the, the new layout of the actual subdivision. So this is the existing portion of history drive here, with the houses that are currently located on each side of it, and this is the proposed extension that comes down through here. We do have fourteen additional lots shown, one being a rear lot down here. What we did since the last revision was we kind of reconfigured these lines to give this lot a little bit more room, just due to the wetlands that are here. Before, the lot lines kind of gave this lot the extra frontage, and lot one was more towards the minimum. We kind of shifted all these down, so they all have minimum frontage down to this area, and then this one just opened up a little bit more to give, you know, more room for the septic system and everything. Also, these two lots at the back of the cul-de-sac, it was just getting too tight with the drainage and the easement, trying to fit septic, septic systems on both lots and meet the setbacks for septic systems to wetlands and everything as well, so we combined this into one large lot as well, that would just have a single house, and also would have the drainage system within an easement to the town. And again, this is the rear lot, which does, I think, we said sixty-seven feet of frontage, so this would come down in the back here, and this lot has, I can't read it right now. I think it was about, what, nine acres left over, something like that? Yeah. It was a large lot, so this is the, this is the, kind of the match line, this shows the whole remaining portion of land that goes with that lot.
Yeah, it, two eighty-seven square feet?
Yeah. Uh, this just shows the, the grading and the drainage on the site, so basically, there's a, there's a crest about right in this area here, that would continue the same grade up history drive to here, and then as the slope of the natural land slopes back down, we kind of crested and went back, back downhill as well. So the road's about a seven and a half percent slope, and in the cul-de-sac, it, it flattens out to about a three percent slope, just to allow for easier turning, turning radius as people are turning around. You can see the detention basin down in the back here, as I said, is within the easement. The drain line comes right down the whole center of the roadway with a series of catch basins. Every, every, less than three hundred feet, there's, there's two catch basins, and the drain line does continue down right through here and feeds the basin. We have a few outlets coming out in this direction, some outlets coming out in this direction, and then there's a spillway right in the middle here.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
For lot nine, that's the big lot?
Yep.
Down below. So are you planning that lot, so you're gonna put the house there, are you planning on clearing, like, all that area, or is it just gonna be like a lot that's?
I think just what's needed, right? I mean.
Just what's needed for the house and the septic.
Okay, and the rest will just remain?
Just remain woods.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Actually, while I'm back on this plan too, I think all this, but you can also see the street trees that are located along the side of the road. Here, here, they basically evenly spaced around the entire roadway. We do have a light in the middle of the road and a light at the back of the cul-de-sac, and we also, I think there was some feedback in the fire department, we added a separate hydrant in the middle of the property and also at the end, so there are, there are two hydrants now on the subdivision.
Okay, can I ask you a question regarding stormwater management?
Yep.
I'm interpreting all the stormwater management being done to this point is just for road?
Nope. No, it's.
And grading of the land?
Yes.
Okay, but it doesn't account for any of the lots?
No, it does.
Does it come for the lots, for the roofs?
Yes. Roofs, driveways, lawns, everything.
It does?
Yep.
So everything's gonna be, the post is still gonna be better than the pre?
Correct, and we won't have to do individual lot designs.
That's, well, that's why.
When the time comes. Because these lots are, you know, they're not huge lots, so it makes it very difficult to make the, the lots work.
Your buddies were concerned about runoff, because you're, you're on a, you're on a hill and everything goes downhill, so.
So basically, you can see these coming off of these houses here, these little angles here, these are, these are drainage pipes for the roofs. So the, the idea is that everything from the house forward is, is grading towards the street, so everything would come into the street and go into the catch basins, which would ultimately go back to the detention basin. And on the, on this side here, whatever isn't going out into the street would flow to the back, and then we have a proposed, this dash line here is like a earthen berm, just like a little twelve-inch berm, so it would direct water, which just kind of create a gutter line and just, and just run down through here, there's a culvert under this driveway, and it would continue down and make it into the basin as well.
So who maintains that basin, or how often does it have to be maintained?
Um.
Is that gonna be, the town takes that over when?
If the town accepts the road, they'd accept the drainage.
Until then?
Until then, the developer.
The developer?
Yep. Yep. So during construction, it would be utilized as like a sediment trap, you know, for any runoff to, to go into, and it gets cleaned out, you know, one final time at the end, once everything's seeded, and so no, no more sediment can make it in there.
And typically, that's how that will work, they, they don't need to be maintained after that, or?
No, it does have to be maintained after, but it's mostly just like, you know, mowing a few times a year, cleaning out any debris that would get in there. Catch basins would be, you know, clamshell, like, clean out the dirt in the springtime.
So can you just explain that one more time, so it's a twelve-inch berm?
Yeah, it's basically, it's just a, call it earthen berm, so it's just a, a little, you know, berm there so that any water.
So that's gonna go over that lot nine's driveway?
No, it's actually gonna go under it, so there would be a pipe, we have a twelve-inch culvert underneath the driveway.
Okay.
So the water would, would flow under that and continue on down the berm here and right So this is the roadway profile, this shows coming in off of the existing portion of history drive here to that crest I was talking about, then it slopes down to a seven and a half percent slope. This is the cul-de-sac down here at a three percent slope. This just shows the individual catch basins, manholes, and the water line, this is the twelve-inch pipe that, that continues on down through here and continues off the backside of the cul-de-sac. And this is an erosion control plan. During construction, it just has the owner's information, the applicant's information, the engineer, has some schedule of, you know, inspections, when, when they can do those each month, and there's some symbols on here just showing like temporary diversion channels to get runoff during construction into this sedimentation basin with some siltation fence that goes around the limited work area for the roadway, and a tracking pad up here, so that vehicles kind of knock the mud off their tires before they enter the existing history That's about it, then we just get into some other construction details. This is kind of a cross-section of the infiltration basin down below, shows the outlet pipes and.
So your, your basin at the bottom of the cul-de-sac, at bottom of the, your subdivision is, how deep is that? How much water is it gonna hold?
Um, I believe it's four feet deep, but that also would include like a one foot of freeboard above the water level at the hundred-year storm, so, like a two-year storm, I could look in the drainage report, but the two-year storm probably gets to about a foot, foot or so high.
Is that gonna be fenced in?
Uh, it is not currently proposed to be fenced in, but I'm much, maybe if the board would like it to be, it can be.
I would like.
I'm just concerned, because it's, it's right behind two-year lots.
Yeah.
Yep. I look at those like, I said before, like a, a storm hole.
Those are kid magnets.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've seen different.
So if it's gonna hold water, we prefer it.
It's four feet deep.
I guess my preference is that we put a fence around it. If it's gonna hold water. I mean, if it's only gonna hold water during a vent and it goes away in days, that's different than something that's.
Well, it does, it does drain, I think, within probably like thirty to forty hours at the most. Has to drain within seventy-two hours, but it's, actually drains faster than that. But it's one of those things, I've seen some towns want the fence, other towns think the fence kind of attracts kids also to climb it, so.
It's still allowed to.
It's, you know, one of those, whatever you like to see.
It becomes another maintenance item too, if that's what.
Yeah, for the town, right?
Yep.
If it doesn't hold, if it, if it's not gonna hold water, I'll, I'll, I'll let it go.
I'm just, again, I'm one board member, I'd rather see a fence, fence put up around it. Freezes up in the winter.
Tony, that's something we should deal with, DPW, find out what their attitude is with.
Freezes up in the wintertime or gets clogged or whatever, there's a million reasons why those can fail.
Yes, so we went through this before.
Yes.
With the self-storage facility, as I recall, and, and in that review, DPW and, and I talked about installation of, of a fence, like a country fence, wooden fence of that nature, and not just traditional wire fence around the, the site, because of its location right on the roadway. This is setback. However, from what I've seen in the past too, in other subdivisions, we've required a traditional wire fence at a location like this, where it's in the back, but also perhaps landscaping around it too, so as the years go by, it just a few will blend in. Something for the board to consider, if you wish.
But twenty-five years out, right? Twenty-five years out, wire fence needs to be replaced.
Yep.
Now, when the roadway is accepted by the town, is that part of the town's maintenance obligation?
I believe the, the underground utilities and stormwater would be a part of it too.
Well, I, I think we need to get clear on that, or we need to start having neighborhood associations that have dues collecting powers. I mean, you're, you're just raising the issue, okay? What, what does it look like twenty-five years from now, right? I prefer a fence, I prefer a fence too, but then the question is, twenty-five years from now, when the fence is pitching this way, falling down, right?
Treetilings on top of it.
Is it, is it maintained by the town on the scheme that this is part of the roadway, roadway maintenance, it's part of the drainage system for the roadway, and the town can go on the land and do what it needs to do, or is it?
Well, that's where you go with what Tony's saying, if you put, you know, abreviations around it, or push the, whatever, that gets thick enough where that makes its own barrier itself, you know, to do in twenty-five years.
Yeah, but he's still gonna leave a rusty fence out there.
Yeah, he won't be able to see it.
If we're concerned about kids, I wouldn't want to leave a rusty fence out there.
That's my, that's my, because I know, like, on, on Wayne Ave, they had the, the one there that wasn't put, the kids were sliding, taking that toboggan slide right down the hill, right into it, you know, and, and I'm thinking, in the wintertime, it's not gonna drain, because it's gonna be frozen ice or whatever, it's not gonna drain properly.
As a, as someone who has, has a detention pond right behind my house, it's fenced for twenty-five years, I will tell you that maintaining around the fence is a pain in the, you know what? And I personally have, in twenty-five years, I've, I've seen maybe that much water during a huge storm. The one that was behind my house has an infiltrator on the, you know, underneath the ground, it, they're always kicking water out, so any water that just sits in it just goes out. If there's a big storm, it'll go out. I've never seen the water get up to the holes in the outlet structure. And the trees that they planted around are just like growing into the fence, and it's the worst-looking thing you've ever seen. I used to be a fence guy, personally, I prefer not to have a fence, and if I was a DPW, I prefer, because they go out there and they maintain it, they mow it.
Yep.
Uh, if a tree dies, they pull the tree out, they do a really nice job. And if the fence was on there, they could do an even better job, because they don't, you know, they, they don't come on this side of the fence, and it just gets, if you ever tried weed whacking under a fence, not good.
Weed's just left to grow in between chain of fences.
Yeah, and I don't really see the one behind me as a safety hazard, because it's never watering.
Mr. Chairman, also, a consideration though too, should the town accept the roadway and, and the utilities, that there be some type of easement for access for maintenance here? So we should have something like that on, on the plans.
Yeah, we should show something, because you're showing it in somebody's lot.
No, there isn't easement all the way out to the cul-de-sac.
There is all the way, yeah.
Yeah. These are easement lines right here, dash lines right here and right here.
Is that, is that for the, for the infiltration area?
Is that gonna be like a, a dirt road or roadway or anything?
Um, no, it's just gonna be grass.
Grass.
Yeah.
I know it's semantics, but maybe we should relate, rename it Drainage and Access Easement, just so there's no question that the town has access to it.
And what's the, what's, what's the grade over, is it, is it a steep hill, is it no hill, is it like? And what's the, what's, what's the grade over? Is it, is it a steep hill? Is it no hill? Is it like? Because I know we had another issue with one too. You needed a tank to get down to it, the one up of our-
I mean, it does slope down, but I know that you can get a backhoe down there pretty easily. I mean, we drove one down there already. Yeah, it's called Drainage Easement on there.
Yeah, I know. You, you got it on there. It's on G, G one.
Yeah, this is the recorded plan that goes to the registry. This is labeled as a drainage easement.
So if need be, the town can get to that, if you can get a backhoe down there to-
Yeah.
Do you think it's a valid point, once we start looking at the subdivision revisions, discussing forward maintenance on things, as Mark said? Doesn't apply here.
Just a thought on that, that last lot in the middle of the cul-de-sac lot number, uh, the one with the detention pond behind it. I mean, is there a chance you can take that property line and shift it a little bit closer to the, um, maybe to the west, to the east, I mean? And get that, that grading, I know it's just preliminary grading for that house, but maybe keep that grading out of that easement? The drainage easement? So, so if the town does have to drive down there, they're not like, because it looks like a pretty good slope. And I, again, I know that's just preliminary grading.
Yeah.
But it probably would be ideal to not have any, the house grading in that easement. Just for access to the town to get down in the back.
Yeah, we can, we can adjust that or even adjust the grading, you know, one or the other. Yeah.
All right, dude, I guess we haven't decided what, if we should require the fence or not. I know we have opinions each way.
Well, why don't we leave that up to the DPW? Why don't we take their recommendation?
You wanna do that? You wanna get a recommendation from the DPW?
Yeah, and plus they're gonna be maintaining it, so we should get their opinion.
I'm not maintaining it. Okay. Okay, so Tony, could you get Jared to address his feelings on fences around detention ponds?
Sure.
I know this one's fairly shallow. I mean, it's-
Yeah, I mean, like I said, the, the other one had a steeping bank going down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that thing was a killer from a depth point of view.
Changes month to month, right?
I, I still see. There's always, there's always a nice built-in slope going right down that all right.
Anyway, we, we are discussing, you know, stormwater in the town of Oxford anyway. It's being upgraded.
In all hell, I can get guys.
Yeah, going to DPW is a good thing.
Yeah.
Get their feeling on it.
The Wi-Fi, so I can sign on.
Thank you for my last name.
All right.
Password is one, two, three, four.
How'd you know my password?
Anyway, anything else from the board members? Did we resolve your issues as far as your waivers? And, uh, what's on the plan and everything else? So you're all set with that? Any other, are there any adjustments to the, to the, uh? You talked about moving on Lot Line? Is that what you were talking about? No? I don't know. Well, if you're not gonna change the plan, that's fine.
Oh, Craig, Craig got a point there, to move further, to get the easement a little more away from-
Well, that's a grading, that's a grading.
Yeah, we'll pull the grading back a little bit, grading outside of the easement.
All right, okay. And I'll follow up on the, with DPW on, on the fencing. Um, there should also be, um, so I do wanna go back and just, uh, ensure that in any draft conditions, I provided you with some draft conditions tonight. Um, but I do wanna look at the easement language. Um, I wanna incorporate some easement access language in there that I don't think I actually incorporated.
Okay.
Make mention of stormwater as part of the roadway, um, as a private roadway agreement. But, um, if there's an opportunity, I'd like to work that a little bit into the conditions.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that's why, as long as it's a private roadway, these guys will be responsible for.
Indeed, but, but-
Which makes a big difference. If the town never incorporates, like if it gets done, if they didn't incorporate it as a town road, then someone's gonna have to maintain.
Certainly, certainly.
Okay, everyone all set up here?
Mm-hmm.
How about the public? Come on up. Name an address for the record, please.
Jack Carroll, um, Three History Drive. Just have a couple of questions, okay?
Okay.
I like the plans. I just have a question. The difference between the distance on the existing house road width and the new road, is it the same, do you know? I mean, has it been enlarged, do you know?
No, it's the same width.
It is the same width?
Yes.
Okay. And so the sidewalks on both sides of the street too?
Yes.
Okay. And it's considered a private road, so that-
No, no, they wanna turn it public.
Yeah, they wanna tell why it's, why it's being built.
Okay. And, and the question about the retention point, there's one on, on History Estates now, I don't know if you're aware of it or not. It does have a fence around it, but there's no, um, children in that neighborhood ever seen down yet. And there's never very much water. I mean, maybe a couple of frogs living there, but having said that, the DPW maintains it. It looks really nice. I know it's only been up there sixteen years, uh, that fence, but it looks mint, so, uh, if you make any decision on whether you have metal fence or wooden fence, um, that's-
Is it a wooden or is it a metal fence that's around the end?
It's a metal fence.
It's a chain link, right?
Yeah, yeah, like four foot, like four feet.
Yeah, black.
Black.
Yeah.
Final coated black.
So I mean, um, it's, I don't think there would be a problem, especially in that location, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, we don't know who's moving in there, how many kids or whatnot. You don't know.
Those are the only questions I have. Actually, they weren't even questions, they were just statements. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great drop, by the way.
Thanks. Anyone else? No? Okay, well, I'd like to get the, those comments from DPW. Like, we need a way to proceed anyway, because unless you put it on there, we know it's gonna be there, and if we want it, I wanna make sure the town wants it too, uh, from a, from a maintenance point of view. I've seen, we have them in town, most of them have been fenced up to this point. You can do what you wish too, if you want.
I'm saying, would it help, I, I'll just assume additive plan now if it helps, and then DPW wants to take it off.
Well, you can do that if you want. I, I don't think we're in a position to vote on this tonight, okay? Tony wants to look at the easements and everything like that and probably run some stuff by DPW tonight also, right?
Yes, yes. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just had a question. Um, we brought up Lot Number Nine in terms of the amount of clearing. And the EPK said that they'll clear as much as needed, but, but do we wanna articulate how much, or if EPK has an idea, how much of the, Lot Nine is the largest lot? So, um, how much is needed is subjective, right? Um, so I don't know if there's a percentage or, um, certain square footage.
Did you say there was nine acres on Lot Nine?
It's gonna be basically the driveway and-
It's a driveway and a house and a backyard.
It's gonna be no more than the other.
Maybe you could, maybe you could show the, uh, tree line, show the tree lines.
Yeah.
Right now, you're showing us vacant lots. That's all we know right now, vacant lots.
So if we just dictate a, uh, a limit of clearing?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
And what's your, uh, what's your stormwater management entail? How much clear, how much disturbance, uh, the whole lot, the whole?
No, not the whole lot.
Those gotta be shown, because I, I mean, that does, all that impacts. Like a gentleman said at our last meeting, he was just concerned about runoff onto other properties, and he wants to make sure the water's taken care of. So, I think you should show the tree line, approximate tree lines based upon your stormwater management.
And I would assume that, that one has its own stormwater, that, that's not related to the ones up on the cul-de-sac, is it?
What's that?
Lot Number Nine? Does that all flow back?
The whole project was designed as one, so-
Oh, really? So that, so that all flows back into the?
They don't all go through the basin?
Anything, yeah.
But the basins overcompensates for the ones that don't, so it holds back more water. It, at the end of the day, basically, the subdivision is shedding off less water than what's currently shedding off.
Does your drainage report show the area that you calculated for disturbance?
Yes.
For your watershed?
Yeah, there's drainage maps at the back of the drainage report.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see the tree line layout on the plan. Are you putting in that earthen berm? I don't know, you're leaving trees, you're leaving trees in that area or what?
Yeah, it's not gonna clear all the way to that. Like I said, it's just a little one-foot berm, just enough to keep the water flowing down.
Okay, so you're, so you're just gonna be creating like a channel for the water to go follow?
Correct.
That, that berm he's talking about, the majority of it going down, is a stone wall there now anyways?
Yeah, it's gonna be right before the stone wall, basically. So you're gonna build up, uh, against the stone wall, building it up, so they'll-
Okay.
All right. I have no problem with that. I, I- Well, we're gonna go getting ducks in a row with the DPW and easement stuff and everything else. Tony needs you to add something to your plan regarding that, or we can just, we can put in our conditions. Uh, if you wanna incorporate on your plan the tree clearing, approximate tree clearing, that'd be great. Let us know how much is not gonna be disturbed. That's good. And we can wrap this up at our next meeting. I don't see a reason why we can't.
Is that the first meeting in April? Is that, this is the second meeting in March, right, or?
No, this is, this is the first meeting.
This is the first meeting, the twenty-eighth. We can get you on there, twenty-eighth. It may be late, because we have the, uh, we have a, another special permit.
Might be really late.
We'll be on first then, or? So we're in and out?
No.
No?
I don't know if I can do that.
Oh, they're already scheduled?
Yeah, but, yeah.
Eddie, can wait till the first meeting in April. That's your choice.
I prefer to get it done, but I don't think, you know, but-
I, I, I wanna accommodate you, but I wanna make sure we do everything on our part, so that we're all ready for that next meeting, so we can go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing and-
Right.
Yeah.
Approve it, so.
These minor items can't just be conditions? It doesn't really seem like it's too much to-
Well, we can't, I can, we can't condition what the DPW is gonna say. I, I wanna, I wanna work in harmony with the town.
Yeah. I mean, if they want a fence, we can just put the fence on.
Well, it's not just that, the easements too, and-
Yeah.
I would actually consider, since we're reaching out to DPW anyway, asking their opinion on the grading for access? If they have any concerns and what they'd want it to look like. It's their equipment. They, they know the best, so.
Did they get a copy of the plans? Did they comment?
No, no, no comments on that. Happy to follow up. Um, you know, Graves did, did do the peer review, um, to include the stormwater and so on, but, but no, but I'm happy to-
I mean, they may have no concern on the grade. I mean, they, they know their equipment better than we do, so.
They just-
They can get a backhoe down.
This revision was just done three, seven, so I don't know if they, it even hit their desks at this point.
Just since we're reaching out already, we might as well add it to the list for-
Sure.
DPW.
And, um, Mr. Chairman, did prepare some draft conditions too-
Yep.
-for the board. Um, these were finalized today, shared with the applicant. And as I said, I will go back and incorporate what was discussed here too. Somewhat similar to the original approval.
Yep.
But we did, we did add a little bit to it as well. Um, general conditions of approval, including, um, standard language with respect to the authorization, so that this is to be a fourteen residential house lot. And, um, as a permanent condition of the approval, no further subdivision of the property beyond the fourteen lots is allowed. Although lot boundaries within the subdivision may be adjusted, as long as no additional lots are created. It's almost verbatim from our subdivision rules and regs and subdivision control law. Completion schedule, um, did put it for, um, within two years from endorsement. The original approval, I believe, had it one year, and this is completion of, I should say, other constructional ways and installation of municipal services. Although at times, and has been done in the past, applicants have come, requested extensions, um, and the board has granted them as they, as they see fit. Number three hundred, general conditions, just a, um, general condition too, that the approval does not relieve the applicant from responsibilities to obtain other permits as required by federal, state, and local. That includes border health, that includes maybe stormwater and so on. Uh, the next section is conditions to be met prior to the endorsement of the plan. So after we approve this, as we recall, that stage of endorsement after the appeal period is over, plans come back. The applicant, um, through subdivision rules and regs and, and subdivision control law, has the, uh, as we know, has the ability to specify what type of security they, they, they would select. Um, B is a roadway covenant. Um, this is similar to the, the original plan as well. Um, but they are to deliver a fully executed roadway maintenance covenant in the form approved by the board to assure that the roadway will be maintained collectively by the owners of the lot shown on the subdivision plan, um, until which time if the town approves it as a public way. Plan revisions, um, although this would probably also be revised, but, um, I'll go through these. EPK shall inscribe on the plan and note that the lots in the subdivision shall be used for single-family residential purposes. Two, that the plan shall be added indicating receipt of an orders of condition from the Conservation Commission and any required permit from the Army Corps. That the cover sheet be revised to list approved waivers. Um, the waivers are on here, but just to have noted, um, which waivers have been approved. Four, a note shall be added to all plan sheets indicate that present and future owners are subject to the private roadway agreement. Five, this is new. Um, the EPK shall obtain property addresses for all lots from the town assessor, include the information on the plan. Be a tremendous help in the future when, um, someone's interested in purchasing a lot, they already have the assigned numbers. Tremendously helpful for inspections too.
Does the assessor assign numbers to a plan that's not been approved yet, that's not even been recorded yet?
This would be after the approval prior to endorsement. They would be able to assign numbers.
They, they will assign numbers?
Oh. Per the, I, I did follow, this was a request of the assessor. And so when we have the, um, when the time comes for them to record, it will already be a separate sheet showing all of the addresses for the, for the lots.
Excellent.
See what happens on a side notice. Someone sees Lot Number Three, they'll say, well, I'm Three History Drive or so. Very often. Um, six, the signature in the plan sheet shall be revised to add space for the pending endorsement. Um, that's standard. And if needed, that the plan sheets shall be renumbered. Uh, D is the private roadway agreement. Um, I'll read this out a little bit. The EPK shall provide a proposed private roadway agreement. The document shall include management responsibilities and procedures for voting and fee assessment for the ownership and financial responsibility for the ongoing maintenance, upkeep, and repair of the private way, including but not limited to snow plowing and sanding. Stormwater management system and landscaping included in the landscape island in the cul-de-sac. Documents shall specify the costs. Shall specify that the costs shall be divided among the property owners, and the agreement shall terminate if it is agreed upon at a town meeting to accept the private roadway as a public roadway.
So, Tony, I just got a question on that. So this will be considered a private roadway, and then it will go in front of like a town meeting to accept it as a public?
Yes.
Okay, it's been developed and, okay.
We don't know when, of course.
Right.
That would transpire, and, and that's why it's important, um, to have some type of mechanism in here to assure- That would transpire, and, and that's why it's important to have some type of mechanism in here to assure maintenance until which time. Which again goes back to, which, and I appreciate the discussion about the, the drainage easement, and to be modified at access as well. So, so we'll incorporate that in there. Lot deeds, the applicant shall provide the proposed deeds to convey each of the house lots to future owners. Each lot deed shall reference the private roadway agreement. And any homeowners association as the responsible party for the maintenance and upkeep of the way as a permanent private road, landscaping and storm, and the stormwater drainage system. The deed shall specify that future owners will own to the centerline of the roadway along the property's frontage.
Tony, can I just, I don't wanna get into it, but that last part, I don't, I don't think I really like that, just based on my personal experience.
Sure.
Because you get into a point where the road's been there for a while, now everybody owns to the middle, or the developer disappears, everybody owns to the middle, and then it's just a cluster. If you're trying to accept it. I don't know why I, and that owning to the middle thing is always a pain in the butt.
Okay.
Always a pain in the butt. I personally think that it should be just all owned by the developer. The people own to the middle, I know there are state laws, but I think if the deeds are written correctly, then the owner will not own to the middle of the road, so...
Yeah, the subdivision roadway should be reserved by the developer.
Right.
So he can give it over to the town when it's accepted by the town.
That's what I was trying to say.
Notice.
All right. And in the future, unless you wanna make me a wealthy man, you don't, you don't tell people they own to the centerline. They do by operational law if it's a private road, but they don't need to know that, because once they know that, they, they find ways to make up fights, right? I see somebody laughing, okay? They know that, they know that agony, so... It's by operational law, we don't need to tell them.
Inspection and legal fees, inspection of roadways and infrastructure and utility construction, installation of site amenities, including landscaping by the town's consulting engineer, and review of legal documents by town council are required. Prior to plan endorsement, that the applicant shall pay an inspection legal fee to the town of Oxford and establish an account for such inspections and legal services. Following that, planning board shall determine the amount based on the estimate provided by the town's consulting engineer, based on the scope of work. And as we know, the funds can be used by the board's discretion. And summarizing here that any unused funds would be returned to the applicant. The next section, section is conditions to be met prior to construction of ways and installation of municipal services. So the applicant is to obtain all curb cut permits, that there be a roadway inspection agreement. There be a pre-construction meeting, at least seven days prior to the start of any site preparation work. Pre-construction meetings with town staff, and discussion of things scheduled to be reviewed and procedures for inspection, inspections to be discussed. Copy of the SWIP, that's the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, as filed, shall be provided to the town. And pre-construction meetings will be coordinated with land management. Next section is restrictions on construction activities. And put a few items on here for consideration. Construction time, so construction work at the site. Between the hours of seven AM and six PM Monday through Saturday. No construction will take place on Sundays or legal holidays without advance approval of the building commissioner. Two, abutters, the applicant shall notify abutters in the general area around the site when site work and construction are scheduled to start, and provide the phone number, should any questions or concerns arise, and that permanent land management shall also be notified. That dust control measures be in place, this will also be incorporated in, in, in the SWIP as well. But that applicant take all measures needed to ensure that no excessive dust leaves the premise during construction. And may include using water to spray wet surfaces. Construction debris shall be removed. Site, construction sites shall be cleaned up on a daily basis, and if any debris were to fall on adjacent properties, that, that too shall also be removed on a daily basis. No tracking of construction materials onto any roadway. Daily sweeping of the roadway, of roadways, in this case roadway adjacent to the site, shall be done to ensure that any loose gravel or dirt is removed, doesn't create a hazardous condition for vehicles, pedestrians, and abutters. And that the applicant shall be responsible for our cleanup of the roadway. Cleanup shall occur as soon as possible or within twelve hours of its occurrence. Erosion control, again, all erosion control measures shall be installed by the applicant prior to the start of construction and observed by the board's consulting engineer, and shall be maintained in good repair throughout the construction period. And the last one, construction traffic, parking. During construction, the adequate provisions to be made on-site for parking, storing, and stacking of construction materials and vehicles. It's particularly important where History Drive, uh, the, the current piece, particularly important to ensure that that's clear and well-maintained for the, for the abutters. No parking of construction and constructionally vehicles shall take place on adjacent public ways. That's History Drive is currently a public way, so... Or interfere with the safe movement of persons and vehicles on adjacent properties and roadways. The next section is during construction, in essence, that there's some flexibility for on-site field changes. And so prior to undertaking any field changes, the primatee or contractor shall discuss with the town's consulting engineer, submit a letter and drawings to land management describing the proposed changes and what conditions or emergencies necessitate changes. The building commissioner may determine, now, we may leave this as building commissioner and DPW director may determine that field changes are insubstantial, authorize the change, and so notify this board. But if it's determined to be substantial, the board shall review the proposed field changes at a public meeting and determine whether the proposed changes are reasonable and acceptable based on unforeseen conditions or emergencies, and whether other options are feasible or more suitable. And that a written authorization of field changes will be provided. And that any approved field change shall be reflected on the as-built plan to be provided at project completion. It is up to the board, felt as though this may be helpful to, to mitigate the significant revisions to the as-built plans at the end, some, whereas there's construction oversight, but creating a mechanism of some flexibility on the field. But if there is a, certainly a question or concern that's substantial, then the applicant is to come before the board. May be different than, than in the past, certainly up to the board if you wanna have that ability to, to make that determination. I, I don't know if it's, if there's a better way to...
What we'd consider, what would be a minor change and a major change, you know, if all of a sudden they said, well, we're gonna move, or we're, we're gonna make any of these lots smaller or bigger subs- substantially, and you won't know that till you get to construction, but...
So, so lot, lots, lot lines won't change, and it might be something grading?
Grading, yeah, yeah.
Hard to say, it's unforeseen circumstances, but...
They hit a lot of ledge on one of them, or no ledge on another, uh, yeah.
Perhaps.
Is that, again, if you start changing grading, you also start, start changing your stormwater management too. On, right?
Yeah, you may, you may.
Well, in the past, in, in the past, we've had developers come with us with a, with a change they needed to do within the plan. And they would ask us if we wanted to have them go through a modification process, or ask us if we thought it was a big deal. Okay, and I, I recall there's been a few of them, and we said, nah, that's not a big deal. And, yeah, they would, you would go on the site as-built at the end. So you can, you just, you're just basically documenting what has happened in the past by developers coming to the board, knowing that they're violating the plan on record for some particular thing, you know?
If this hasn't been an issue in the past, then we can maintain the past practice?
My only concern would be if it affected the stormwater management, and they had to redo all the calculations over again or something like that, that would be a...
I don't, I don't object to anything that gives us a mechanism for dealing with it before we get to the, the as-built, and oh, hey, by the way, it's already done, but this is what you got. You know, giving us some heads up, but, you know, I, I realize people in the past, there have been some people that have been... Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't want that to give them capital, and so we don't even have to come in front of the planning board, we'll just show it on the as-built.
We've gotten burned on that before.
Yeah. Don't want something like that either. Yeah, um, Tony, just going back to the provisions regarding private roadway agreements, I mean, typically, isn't it the developer's responsibility to maintain the roadway until it's accepted by the town? So, I mean, we used to do the, when, when I was counsel to the planning board in Boylston, they have a lot of private roads, and they did a lot of subdivision with neighborhood associations that were responsible for the retention basins and the roadways. I mean, it's either one or the other, so, and, and I'd prefer to see it, you know, to, to get the exigency, if you will, on finishing the roadway. Because it would be a mess if there's fourteen lots there and fourteen different opinions on what should get done. So I'd prefer to not see private roadways, to see the developer accept the fee in the roadway, in the deed. You know, obviously, to get, together with a right-of-way over History Drive as shown on such and such a plan, but accepting the fee to the developer, so that it's the developer that's conveying the roadway to the town and is responsible for the maintenance until it is accepted by the town. I don't wanna have a year or two of you owe fifty bucks, or you owe three hundred bucks for snow plowing, and you didn't pay, and... That won't go over. And that, that's what I see D, paragraph D in E, kinda going both ways? Which is no, it's, it's the developer's responsibility to finish the roadway and turn it over to the town.
I'll make those changes. I appreciate it.
I'm just, I'm giving you the benefit of past bad experience.
And then finally, the last piece. There's conditions to be met upon installation of the ways and services. These are identical to the previous approval. So number one, the applicant shall provide an as-built construction plan and acceptance plan. Two, applicant shall maintain and repair the completed roadway or establish an escrow account with the town for set purposes until the roadway, and here is the word easements, easements are submitted to the town meeting for acceptance. That will be reworked. Three, the applicant shall send a written request by registered mail to the planning board town clerk requesting release from a security when all required construction is completed. This is standard under subdivision rules and regs and, and subdivision control law. So if the planning board determines that the construction is complete, the board shall release the security by an instrument that could be recorded and return all funds to the applicant. While the planning board shall obtain the security if the board determines that construction is not complete and specify in written notice to the applicant and town clerk what construction is incomplete. And finally, the applicant shall maintain all trees and landscape planted as part of the construction of ways and services for a period of two years. Perhaps we don't put a limitation on the period of two years?
I was gonna say one, every, I mean, they, they could put those trees in first thing off the bat. Because, I mean, once, should be a time period.
And it might be the last thing, I don't...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, it's a, the, the timing issue's really governed by the applicant when, when they finish the roadway. I imagine you're gonna start at the terminus of the existing History Drive and start those houses first, right? You know?
Sorry, we had it on previous plan, the first two lots, the first one left and one on the right, we would use that as a staging or a middle parking areas for equipment.
So you're not gonna build there first?
Yeah, we're, we're going back to it.
Is your intention to do the roadway and then as you sell lots, or what? You're gonna finish the roadway first and then, then create the driveways and lots to abut the road?
Yes, I was gonna clear for the road and clear for potentially four house lots, not the first two. The first two, I'd clear smaller areas for staging, for the place to park, so we're off the street.
One of my frustrations as a board member is watching roads stay in binder state for year upon year upon year, and they're, the typical, typical discussion is, well, we don't wanna put the finish coat on until we build up all the houses. To me, that's not right, because you got a binder that's deteriorating. It could be ready to be replaced by the time the last house is put in there, okay? My idea, my idea is exactly what you wanna do, you wanna build the road first and then build the houses after.
Yeah, but you don't, it's really not the best way to do it, because all the construction vehicles are gonna ruin that road.
You could say that about all the town roads too, because construction happens off those all the time. I'm, I'm not, I, from my point of view is a road constantly degrades after, after it's put on the ground, okay? How many years is a road gonna stay in binder state? We've had those, we've had those, we had the, the fifty-five and over development up on North Oxford. Those things were in the binder state for about five to ten years before they were finally completed. You know, I, I just don't, wanna see what a binder road does, come down to Ashworth Drive right now, that's all that's on there is binder. And it's just falling apart, so... I would prefer that you work on the, the road and get it done before you sell your house lots. Doesn't make sense any other way, in my opinion, you got fourteen lots you're dealing with here.
Would you want like a minimum of twelve months for the binder?
We, we don't put a timeline on it, but you know what, it's not a bad idea, to tell you the truth.
I mean, I mean, like you said, if, if, if it's gonna be, I don't know, a two-year project, like you said, a year, a year into the project, having that roadway complete would not be a bad thing.
It would be on my best behalf to complete the road and turn it over to the town sooner than later, so...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but, you do of course, it gives the, any time for settlement, you know, if I just put binder down and settlement that could take place anywhere or for whatever reason, so then I could repair that binder previously doing top coat after one year, so it's seasoned, and then top coated and then turn it.
I mean, that's not a bad, I mean, if you want to put that, that...
We don't document, I'm only telling you what I've seen in the past.
I mean, that's, it is, you're right, you're, it's in your best interest to get this, out of being a private road into the town's, the sooner the better. I mean, even if you only have four houses on that thing, it's still better than having to maintain a road year after year, but again, if, I don't know, I mean, is that, is that an estimate of time of two years to get this whole project done from start to finish, is that a reasonable timeframe or not? I don't, I mean, where the, where the building market is and stuff like that.
I wish I had that crystal.
Yeah.
Well, typically, is our security just a covenant against the entire subdivision? And then when you get down to the last few lots, sometimes there's a bond?
Right, we, yeah, that's what we do, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, how little we know sitting here tonight, you know, what the markets, when you bring these houses to market, and how quickly everything's gonna go.
So we don't require, require a bond until the end?
No, until they wanna sell a lot, that's what's happening, that's what's happening on Kathy's way.
They, they release them, they release them, release them, and it's still binder coat on the road, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea of the applicants, within, you know, a year of, think of, a year of start of construction that the roadway is complete, I don't, I don't know if, we can't say that or not, I don't know if we can...
If not, it could always be extended by the board, the timeline.
Oh, yeah, of course it could.
I'm not, I mean, are you opposed to something like that?
But I mean, doesn't DP, when, when, when the developer says, okay, we're done here, we wanna turn it over to you, doesn't DPW have some say over what they're gonna accept?
That's correct, and that's readiness and the opinion of the developer is the opinion of the developer. So on, on the town side, we'll also have to look at to ensure that, and everything is in good order, that, that the poles, the utility poles are charged up right, that, so... Yes.
Right, and there's a punch list that they've gotta meet before DPW says, yep, we're ready to go.
Correct.
I don't, I don't know what happened on Ashworth Drive.
No, binders don't last.
Oh, I, agreed, no argument there.
It's still in the best interest of the developer to have this roadway complete. The sooner the better. I mean, I think, agree with that, but. I mean, if he's willing to say, we'll put a condition in there within a year of start of construction that the roadway is complete, you know, I have no problem with that. And again, if you need an extension or whatever, then.
No, I always, I always found that, like, you know, Craig made the point, yeah, you want to get, yeah, you driveways in and that before you put the finished binder, you want all your construction equipment in there. Unless you get buyers for all fourteen of those lots right away, that road is gonna sit half-state for a while. And you're gonna have to maintain it longer and everything else. Everything else extends.
Right.
So, you can do what you want. I mean, I, to me, if you want the thing to be, become a public road, you know, the town doesn't say you gotta have all fourteen houses occupied before it becomes a public road. Has to be a finished road, that's all. I've seen it multiple, multiple roads in Spencer are like that. They finish the road before there's even one house being developed. The road is done, so. I leave it either way to, to, to the developer.
Be open to the idea that, um, once the binder goes down, I can start, uh, building permits, right? And then.
Yeah, but you, you can't, you can't, you can't sell any lots until you get rid of the covenant and then you're gonna have to come up with surety to finish the work. At first, it goes into a covenant, you, you, you know. You can't sell a lot until you do the frontage, the road to make them viable lots, so.
Right, which would be up to a base coat, right? So what else?
That's the base, yeah, that's.
That seems to be the thing, but then you've got to put.
That's what we're, yeah.
You've got to put surety to finish the road.
Like you said, now, now we have ten houses with binder coat on the road.
No, what I was gonna say, if, within eighteen, you say even call it eighteen months, within eighteen months from the binder being accepted, you know, for Graves and General or who, DPW, um, but it has to be completed. You know, top coat, berms, trees.
Yeah, when we review our subdivision rules and regs, I want to make sure that, uh, finish coats don't go on there until the binder is inspected by the DPW. You can hide a lot of stuff with a fresh coat of asphalt.
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's the reason why we have the pre-construction meeting as well.
Right, right.
And, you know, set up schedules with the, with the third-party engineer, you know, photos are to be taken. You actually have an example of a of one later this meeting, right? So those types of reports we're expecting.
Yeah.
And, you know, prior to acceptance, yeah, the sidewalks are in, that the stone mortar works, that the landscaping has taken place, that the, that the lighting works. Truly happens where sometimes roads get turned over in other places and
Yeah.
people don't think to check that everything's in place, so. Anyway.
Okay.
So I, I appreciate all the, all the feedback. This is very helpful. I don't know if there's anything else, Mr. Chair, or members you'd like me to incorporate?
No, I, I think we should continue the public hearing so that we can accept DPW comments in there. If you want to do anything with your plan, you got another option to submit those small things we did a week in condition of plan to. I, I want to at least give DPW an opportunity to talk about the fencing.
And then DPW will also look at the, the question of the drainage too.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and all items discussed.
And make sure they got access to that thing back there. That's, we've had some subdivisions that they've had trouble getting down to them.
Jasmine Drive.
Yep, Jasmine Drive, yep.
And my last comment would be, if we continue this to the next meeting, then it would be safe to say, given the, the items on the agenda for the next meeting, that we would probably have to meet at the at the community center, given the capacity here in this room. Forgive me, at the senior center, I misspoke, at the senior center.
Senior center, yeah. What do we got on that, that next meeting agenda, Mary? Is that the, just the?
Distribution Center.
Distribution Center and in-law apartment at thirty-four month plus seven street.
Okay. We'll fit that behind those two. There will be some time before, you know, it could be this time, next meeting, before we even discuss it.
Yeah, I'd give a good hour for that. Shush.
There's only so much you could, there's only so much you could hear, so.
But, there's not that mu, I mean, this, this should, I'm not saying, this should go relatively quickly.
Oh, yeah. As long as all the information is there for Tony to put through as.
I see ninety percent of this.
So what time you think, Mary?
I'll say eight oh five. Shush.
I'll buy everybody coffees before the meeting.
Um, yeah, I, I wouldn't split it until.
Eight oh five.
Eight o'clock. Okay, entertain a motion to continue this public hearing till eight o'clock on, uh, March twenty-eighth at eight oh five PM in the Oxford Senior Center.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Now, you know that you have to stop the other meeting, right? And then break into this one and break out of this one and then go back.
I don't tend to do that.
I'll, I'll second, I'll second your motion, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll let it roll. I mean, that's what we do, I mean. We used to schedule them five minutes apart and then go.
Yeah, we had some midnight.
We just want to make sure you're here. To, to live with our pain if we go beyond that.
Hi, thank you.
I'll bring popcorn.
Down the road, down the road.
Yep.
Aye, carried unanimously. See you next meeting.
Doom and doom, but hey, could, could get it extended like the last time. We were all worried about last time.
I just see the comments out there.
Yeah.
You may have extra stuff in here, Mary, but it's a nice thick file. Anyway, what do we got next? Okay, proposed zoning bylaw and zoning map amendments. I'll turn it over to Tony.
So we, um, we've received the referral back from the Board of Selectmen. And based on the calendar and time to advertise, we're looking at the meeting of April eleventh to hold a public hearing, hearings for all four items. And, and if need be thereafter, we could still continue to, to the twenty-fifth of April as well. But that the public hearing be scheduled, request is the public hearings be scheduled for April eleven.
Okay, entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for the proposed bylaw, chapter twos, the district regulations, section two point three point seven, district boundary division for, what time on?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five PM.
Still moved.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Christine. Further discussion?
I vote aye.
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 Aye, carried unanimously. Uh, second one, chapter twenty-three, marijuana overlay district extension, including zoning map amendment. Schedule that public hearing for seven, ten?
Still moved.
Second.
Second by Roger. Further discussion? Any none? All those voted, go ahead.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously. Next.
Sorry, can I just ask again who made the motion and seconded and missed?
Greg.
Second.
I know.
The next one is a new chapter, large-scale battery energy storage systems, including amendment two, table three, uses in an industrial zoning district. Entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for seven fifteen on April eleventh.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay.
I just, I just have one, will, will be some more information about this?
Yeah, you got some here tonight. He wrote a draft.
Okay.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Can I vote aye? Carried unanimously.
They'll probably be the longer presentation.
And the last one is a zoning map amendment, Southridge Road and I three residential to general business. Entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for seven twenty on April eleventh.
Still moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Any none?
I vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously. Okay, took care of that. Old Business Kathy's Way subdivision, request from developer Conrad Allen to release lot six from covenant. Tony?
These were actually taken today. Let me take a step back. So, so this is the, the entrance to, to Kathy Way. You can see the mobilization here at the entrance. The pavement.
Binder. It's binder, right?
It looks like binder.
Yeah, it looks like binder.
No berms, no, no, nothing else, so.
Nothing yet.
Okay, and I, I take it we, we're looking for is Graves to come up with a, uh, amount of money to release the covenant.
To, to come up, exactly, to come up with, with some type of, um, estimate.
Estimate for the, so we can say to the developer, yeah, you can have that lot, but you gotta put this much into a bank account, in case you don't finish. And let Graves know it doesn't go up to lot six. It, it has to cover, doesn't it cover the whole road?
Sorry, is that a question?
Yeah.
Does it have to cover the entire roadway?
I would think so.
Yeah, I, I would think so as well.
Is there drainage beyond it?
You approve the entire road, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would definitely.
I mean, the developer would.
I just want to make sure Graves understands that too. It's not up to
Understood.
lot six. How many lots are up in that thing?
Eight.
Eight, so this is close to the end anyway, right?
Um, it's actually, you can see it on the, pardon me. Um, so this is right at the entrance, so the, the lot is right here.
Oh, okay.
So.
Have they ever supplied us with a partial ASBIL for what they've built already?
No, I haven't seen anything submitted, no. Um, we do have the reports from Graves, which we've supplied copies. Last report was done in October with photos. But no, no partial ASBIL.
So Graves is gonna look at it from the point of making it to the, to the plan on record. So if they don't see the drainage where it was supposed to be, or that they, that'll raise serious questions in their mind as far as what was done.
That's a good example of a lot being released and not a lot being done on that road.
Well, he's had approval to do this for some time now too, so.
Is the complete binder down for the whole road?
Yes, yes, it is, it is. Lighting's not there yet. Obviously sidewalks, as you can see, not there yet. Trees are not planted in, of course.
So probably all the drainage is in.
The drainage, yes, yeah.
And the binder, so it's just the periphery stuff. And the final asphalt too.
Okay, so we can't, we can't release anything until you get an estimate, that estimate anyway, so we're just gonna skip over this for now.
Right, and the developer is aware that it has both of this process.
Okay, yeah, yeah, well, this is, this is a perfect example of them wanting to build a, a house on an uncompleted road.
But I think, are we in agreement it should be based on the whole road?
Yes.
I, I think.
Yes.
I just want, I would, I would hope so, that's all. Okay, last item on our agenda, I'm gonna step off the board. I'll let you handle it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is that the one, is that the big one up on top of the?
Route twenty, yeah, this is the route twenty. I just asked for an update.
Oh, they're connecting it to, uh. They have a pond.
That's the second egress.
So they're not doing that crazy Auburn thing.
Septic's going that way.
Do they want, do they want to turn that so the camera can see it or?
You did.
Oh.
You good? You got that one going?
Good. Oh, good.
Hi, my name's Chad Boardman. Some of you I've seen, yeah, it's been a while. A few new faces on the board here. For the record, Chad Boardman, representing Eastland Partners, and we're doing the, uh, project along Southbridge Road, almost two thousand feet of frontage, whereas we're doing a large padding site and earth removal operation for a future planned, uh, commercial complex, as well as in the future, perhaps, um, three hundred and twenty residential units up in the back, as you can see up in here. First of all, I want to kind of congratulate everybody in the town of Oxford, because we're obviously with Tony and Jen and, um, Jared's help have obviously been awarded that huge Mass Works grant, uh, for, uh, infrastructure for out on Route twenty, uh, which is, which is totally awesome. Uh, our portion of, of that, uh, work consists of some sewer main, which runs pretty much where my finger is, and it runs through down along here into a pump station. And that, uh, work will actually, um, support new, um, commercial growth up the western end of the corridor of Route twenty, which goes down towards Thayer Pond, so allows a sewer, of course, uh, on the west into a pump station, which will be pumped into the new highway system, which will eventually be pumped over into here, and then it'll be, uh, gravity fed all the way down into, uh, a new pump station or upgraded pump station, I should say, in the town of Auburn. It seems like we've been here forever, um, and actually, we have been here forever. When we initially filed, uh, the frontage plan for the earth removal operation, it triggered, uh, a full MEEPER of the entire parcel. And what happened was, um, with that being said, full traffic, uh, traffic, environmental, um, sewer, water, infrastructure, rare species, the whole kit and caboodle comes up under MEEPER. So it, it locked this front parcel up for development when we had the earth removal permit and of course the padding plan, because we had, we own this, uh, property, which is, uh, actually, uh, budding us as well as the apartment complex in Auburn as well, so they came up to with the, it's called segregation, I believe, or, um, so you can't segregate parcels. So they put the kind of kabots, uh, kibosh on this, uh, program. So then what we had to do was, meanwhile, as you guys remember, the, the whole highway was being moved over left to the right. It, uh, went up in elevation, went down in elevation, went eighty feet into our property. Then it moved back out to the same place, and meanwhile, we're, we're doing nine different plans of trying to, you know, try to see what Mass, Mass DOT is actually doing in here to do, uh, preparations to actually do a controlled stop for in the future, so. And of course, that meant we had to go to the, uh, Mass DOT and with the traffic, try to, uh, conform to our traffic warrant analysis. So again, we had to use the data of conceptually what would be used over in here, as well as the, uh, proposed use for existing zoning up on top to see what would happen to this, uh, the warrant of needing this, uh, proposed signal. So in the long, long, long short, we ended up negotiating with the Mass DOT finally when we knew where the road was going and actually giving them some easements in front up here for the taking to actually conform for future. and actually giving them some easements in front of here for the taking to actually conform for future turnoff lanes and things when this actually triggered the warrant. They're also providing additional, like conduits and things to set up for the future, so they're not, we're not tearing apart Route twenty in ten years. All the provisions and, and things are all adequately thought out right now. So that was really, really encouraging. It took a long time, but we're, you know, we're finally, finally there. And the Mass DOT has incorporated all those revisions of that future into their plans. So that, that's a huge, huge step there for us.
So I have a question. So that proposed commercial use, so that's been okayed? Like, I was just a bit confused, because you said you had to change the plans around and everything?
No, we didn't have, no, no, not really. Remember, we came in front of the padding plan. Still having the padding plan?
That's what I remember.
Yeah, we don't know what the use is, but I am tasked as a proponent to the state to say, well, what's your best guess? Or what you think it would be? Or a lot of times, they use what the worst case will be. So then I have to say, well, this is what we're thinking of. This potentially could be the worst thing. So there's certain things we had to do, which really slowed us down.
This is, this is the only thing we are addressing, is this padded plan. And don't, don't, the housing is.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
My question is, when, how does, when does the signalize like kick in? Is there a threshold for that?
There's a threshold with the traffic warrant analysis. So that wouldn't come online. Say we came in here, we got all commercial and there was.
X amount of cars going through there, trucks, vehicles.
Multiple businesses in here. That data would be collected to see what the impact would, down here, we're tasked to measuring it. Once that threshold, when, when we start coming up into doing this residential that turns, comes into here, there's a certain point of time where it triggers that warrant to be done, okay, in advance. So the, so the traffic study would say, okay, now is the time. We see this coming online, the developer's doing forty units a year. We think in the next, you know, year and a half or two years, this should be reviewed and be under construction. So the good, the good part is all the, the, the turn-in lanes, everything out in the street is wide enough so it could be restriped, conduits are laid dead, street poles, just for the future, which is, which is a huge thing.
So that's my next question, is the turn-in lanes, and when does that kick in?
That would be the same time when it only warrants this access into here.
So even though you're looking at commercial vehicles going into those pads, like?
Yeah. And like I said before, I'll be coming into, to you guys, of course, for all of this. It's just, I'm trying to give you some of the background. Yeah, oh, no, yeah, no. It's pretty, pretty hairy, because it's a monster of a job.
And my point from, right from the beginning is, I want to see this pad thing up and going before I see any of the housing things. I know they all, you know, intertwined together.
It's all intertwined, absolutely.
But again.
You also have to remember even the housing there. I'm, I'm investing in the town of Oxford for, you know, almost a quarter of a billion dollars here. And we're still, this is probably a fifteen-year actual project, so it's, it's a massive project. Not saying this, the overall vicinity here. But again, you know, even thanks to all the town, the town help for, you know, for working with the Mass DOT to get this, you know, the state grant. Tony did a wonderful job, Jared as well, and Town Manager an exceptional job as well. And so that's where it's at right now, is we're currently down here. The town's negotiating with them, getting some easements for some of the property to actually do the sewer work. I'm doing the wetlands analysis right now and have them located into an area here where the sewer can go. And we've also already done a sewer analysis, a, a, a study for that pump station in town of Auburn, which also Jen and Tony and, and are all actively engaged with the town of Auburn on. So it seems like a lot.
And again, they have a million dollar question, is when is the state going to actually do the work on?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We were all worried I was coming here saying, hey, we've got a plan for this, we've got a plan for this. And then it's a year, a year, the road moves eighty feet, then it's into where. But actually, they are doing, they're in the, the taking process of all the parcels, so it's, it's hitting that stage. Just saying late, I believe, this year possibly, starting.
They said last year.
That's what we said, three years ago. Again, even the MEEPER stuff are not, once we had this approved, I can't, I couldn't start here without a, what they call a phase one we, may, a phase one waiver in MEEPER. So again, my hands were tied until I got a phase one waiver, which meant that this particular job goes hand in hand with the construction of the highway. And that took me about seven months to get, and not everybody gets a phase one waiver. And we were able to receive a phase one waiver with that, which, which is very, very hard to do. But luckily, we just moved in. Again, we, we were in there, you know, maybe eight months ago or so. And now we're just moved back in, because again, with my phase one waiver, they wouldn't allow me to run utilities in there, which was part of my original plan, which was in the document I submitted. That took about four months to resolve, and I said, yeah, you're right, you did say you were going to do electricity. So as you guys drive by, you can see electricity. We started blasting again today. We'll be up there mobilizing in the next two weeks with a, a large crushing plant again. And constant communication with Jared down at the town hall. Erosion control measures are safe. All those rainstorms last year we had, no issues with that as well. All the basins have been modified. They're all bonded with the town currently. And so we're looking forward to actually starting the work and staying in there and, you know, moving forward and helping out to, you know, fulfill this Mass Works grant with the sewer work needed to bring growth to the corridor. So again, want to thank everybody in the town again for, you know, their work and congratulate you guys as well as receiving this grant. So it's a wonderful thing.
So you're going to coordinate with the state to actually, when they start working on the road, you'll start working on.
That's correct, yeah. That's timed with Jared, that's the town and Jen, of course, as well.
That's where the turn-in lane would come in when they're doing that?
Oh, no, that, that would be for the, the sewer work.
Sewer work, okay, oh, good.
Yeah, yeah. We saw some, you might have saw some action here.
A little bit, yeah.
In front of the street, you saw that some drills, what we're actually down there probing to see where a ledge was and where, where it wasn't. Where the sewer main would potentially go. So if the Mass DOT says, hey, we're coming out there this fall, and they actually start this fall, we can get in there and actually do the work. We have all the designs done. I'll have this through conservation. I got to go through Auburn Conservation and Oxford Conservation. But at least it's a project where it's, we're both doing together. It's a joint venture, me being the developer and the town of Oxford as well.
And that's where the curve at Cumberland's, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, on the other side of the street. Yeah, yeah, right through Charter, so. Yep, so. It's great. I know there's, Tony's been working for growth in that corridor up in twenty, the business in that sewer corridor, makes all the, you know, sense in the world. At the same time, we finally got studies actually being done as well, because we've been saying, hey, we've got to do something with the water here. What do we need to do for the water? What size water mains and things? Would you, would you want to do to cross? Because they're going to build this road. Now's the time to say, hey, do you need ten inch, twelve inch? So we finally do have a report that's due from Aquarian, which was bought out again by, by another venture. So they've been a little difficult to, you know, get some answers with, but they've actually sent out a feasibility analysis of this water, and they want to do, actually do provide water to this development, so. And that's with conjunction of some booster stations and some water tank locations.
You're going to go up the hill?
Yeah, 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 exactly, eventually, yeah. Over time, it's just, you know, proper planning, but it, it is, it is a monster. And of course, we'll be back here as well with you guys. So we're just trying to piece all the, fill in all the variables, shall we say, to narrow them down and so we can move kind of forward on the appropriate plan.
And is that going to go on a sewer line? Obviously, the commercial is.
Yeah, all that's going to be sewer too. Yep, yeah. So everything gets sewer. The sewer from, I, I did a study in Auburn on a particular pump station. And there's upgrades to the pump station that I'm willing to do as well for this. So I'm doing the sewer main down on the front. We're, I'm doing all the work to get into the pump station. And then the pump station needs to be upgraded as well, which I want to do as well. So that's all part of the package where that Mass Works grant was granted. It's a kind of a private-public kind of partnership kind of, kind of deal to promote growth. And that's, that's my contribution towards the project, which is, you know, roughly five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars. So we're, we're definitely excited to finally move forward, forward out here. And we'll be in front of you for any, any changes, of course, or out in the back.
Well, that's one of the things I've always kind of asked for is, is, you know, updates, whether it's, you know, monthly, and it has, it's been a while. But I, and I understand with the COVID and everything else going on, but, but again, I would still like to see, you know, updates.
And there's a lot, there's a lot to talk about, a lot of behind the scenes.
Right.
Stuff, but it's, you know, not to give you a run on, but, you know, I tend to have mortar mouth, but I'm, I'm, you know, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer.
You've kept the snappy one-liners coming. The proposed duplex roadway that leads into Thayer Pond, do you have access through Thayer?
Yeah, we have a full actually access. The owner of this actually development, we believe, had this at one time, because this is, this is a full, full-blown access with even rights to the sewer.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if there was a future phase of the condo in that area that never got built out.
Yeah, it's very possible, but here's what we're providing. This is through after a few tech reviews. This Thayer Pond had issues of coming out to ma, to Route twenty. They wanted their own light. Of course, the Mass DOT says, oh, no, nay, nay, you guys don't trigger it. So they had to take a right, go up to the intersection, do it around about, come all the way through. So what we said, said, okay, if it's for emergency access, which we're all looking for, including us as well, taking a left turn in here and them as well, why don't, I limit any of my travel lane coming into this way. I'm going to create this as a one-way. So this is a full-blown street going up through this way, but it's a one-way. It's for Thayer Pond residents also to use my streets through here to come out to the controlled stop and to go out.
So that's to take a left?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Instead of going, they have, going down the street, doing a UE and coming all the way back. So that grants another way means for fire, fire apparel. The water could be looped as well for Aquarian. And this gives the opportunity for these people to come out, right out to the controlled stop and go that way. So it worked, worked, worked pretty well, and they were, they were tickled pink with that. Thayer Pond was all over that. They said, that's a great idea. So none of my residents would be going through Thayer Pond, but Thayer Pond would do, use our, our travel.
I thought that, Mary, I thought that part, though, with the new Route twenty expansion, that where that fifty-six and Route twenty, that building, they're going to do a turn, a turnaround, right?
Well, they were going to do this fancy loopy-loop thing, but I don't think that's happening anymore. They were going to go in back of the gas station, the, the shell, whatever. I think they eliminated that, yeah. Yeah.
They're still doing it?
Well, I think what, I think what was happening was, well, I know what's happening. The twenty-five percent, it was a great plan. Then they started looking at it, and they said, oh, yeah, we'll just go eighty feet into our property and take the land, and then they started looking at it and like, holy macro, how much is this thing going to cost? So then, then, then they're like, oh, no, we're not doing that, we're doing this. So then all of a sudden, it turned into that, and then all of a sudden, no, it's, it's doing this. And I'm at the main, I'm at, I'm like with you guys, I'm like, Jesus, well, I've designed this thing four different ways now. Which, which way are we going here?
Again, I guess, how much of the curve are they taking out, or, you know, I mean?
They are taking some of the curve out, yeah, some.
Not as much as originally.
Not as before. And then they were, then they were actually super elevating the road.
And my, my, again, my thing is, it's still, yeah.
They were super elevating a road into my property, which was a cut.
Kind of going up above, yeah.
Which was totally not what you would think would happen there. So they, they abandoned that as well. So the alignment is very similar to where it is, but there's a few sections which are leveled out. And we said, hey, take what you need to make it safe. We don't have an issue with that, so.
Line of sight's going to be important, especially for that first one there.
So that's all embedded out, the traffic engineers as well. Again, the future turning rains, we, we already have on the room farm. They're all worked aligned.
That's going to be important, that's going to be important to that first, first stage there.
So when we come in front of you, at least we know that, that whole thing's been worked with the Mass DOT, you know, straightened out with that. So that's, that's, that's going to be huge. But, yeah, I mean, I can come every, you know, couple of months or something, and, you know, there's a lot of earthwork, but, you know.
That's what I've asked for.
Yeah, like maybe like the end of May, like the last.
Unfortunately, to those of you not here, we abut the Ashworth Drive, but we didn't do that binder paving. Looks like the road's, you know, destroyed.
Not good.
Poor Mr. Scholz up there, who I went on up there the other day was, I mean, looking horrendous.
Do you have an engineer on site who's providing reports or anything? Could we get some reports of them relevant?
Yeah, I think through Jared, I think. Jared, well, remember when Sean was here, Sean was going to actively be engaged in reporting here. I said the same thing to Jared, and he had no issues with that, so. And he's pretty tight with Tony to relay stuff, but I have no problems, you know, coming here as well, now that COVID's over, so.
Like I said, I've said this at the beginning, I'm a big one, one step at a time, and again, a lot, a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of steps.
No, no, and well, again, it's, it's hinging on what the state is going to do with Route twenty. They could, they could change their mind again.
Yeah, yeah. At least they, at least they're executing all the property rights now, so we know that.
Something's going to happen.
They're good, yeah. They stamped the plan. So then it goes out to a design build, which, yeah, there might be a little variation, but it's, it's not, it's not drastic at all. It's all, 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 all good. But, yeah, any other questions, you know, get Tony, or I can come in, you know, a couple of months and.
I appreciate the update.
Yeah, no, no, I thank you guys too, the whole COVID thing.
Maybe the end of May.
You guys probably see where I was either. I was really stagnant over there under the phase one MEEPER thing. I couldn't do anything.
So, yeah, maybe like you said, the end of May.
Yeah, absolutely.
Last meeting in May, if we can.
And anything weird comes up or something, I can relay it to Tony, and you can send an email. But everything, everything's so far so good. Great work and relationship with Jared. We're on top of all the erosion and stuff like that, and it's a little blast, like, we're just getting back in there, so. If there's any issues, I always like to know, because we try to fix it right up the spot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
Turn the meeting back over to us.
Any new business for next meeting that someone wants to bring up, that we got to throw on the agenda?
You might want to explain that to these guys. Anything that we have to now, if you want, any new.
Can't just bring up random stuff. You got, we got to put it on the agenda that we're going to talk about.
Is that a new law?
Open meeting law, yeah.
Yeah, open meeting law.
You can't, you can't just random things can't, really?
Nope.
So a resident just can't come in and say, hey, by the way, and talk about something?
Nope. Well, off the thing, yeah.
They can.
Oh, so we can't have a public.
It's a board can't bring it up.
A board can't bring it up.
Oh, okay.
So like last meeting, I had asked to bring this up.
So stay in your lane.
Well, if you want to talk about it, you got to schedule it so that there's notice and an opportunity.
So anyone from the public, if somebody, you know, again, this is, this is, this is a big project, this eventually, you know, and it's going to be more and more. And when you read something in a paper about this sewer and stuff going, which is a good, it's a good thing. It's a benefit to the town, it's, it's a good thing, you know, but as a board, we didn't know anything about it.
Can I just ask a question? And I don't want to sound like a jerk, but it seems like the board, since I got on, the board's always been like, what's going on with that? What's going on with that? What's going on with that? Why are we, why are we so concerned about what's going when they haven't done anything? They don't even have a plan in front of you. I'm just curious.
Oh, no, they, they submitted a, a plan for this.
Oh, Eastland?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a big.
Oh, no, no.
A definitive residential or commercial plan?
No, 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 no.
Just a rock crushing plan?
Just the padding.
You saw it more tonight than they've.
Yeah, this is the most we've seen.
Exposed in the past.
From, from, from day one, Craig, it's always been the commercial end of getting that done, and that was based on Route twenty being developed, being done.
Right, but I'm saying that.
And for them, for me to read in the paper about, well, the, the sewer's going through and all that, and not knowing what's going on. And again, we, I saw more today than I've seen in two years.
Everyone's made a big deal about it, which I, I'm sure it should be, but it's still inter-basin transfer of water, okay? That hasn't gone away. So I don't know, I don't, I guess I'm having issues with the fact that there's all this capacity for sewerage. I thought we were at it, are very close to it, Tony. You know, that's, and now they're talking three hundred sixty units.
And going up.
Of water use, going, going to Blackstone Valley instead of staying in the French River Valley basin. And I, I don't understand, I'll be the first one to say. And I, I don't understand, I'll be the first one to say, I don't understand the requirements, what's needed. But I do know when they, when they were first developing those lots up in, on that hill and, you know, Ashworth Reserve, all that sewerage was going to Oxford-Rochdale Sewer. And now it's not. So I could use some education, I guess this whole board can use some education about now that we, we're fixing up an old sewer line, that's the way I'm looking at it, okay? We're fixing up a sewer line. Where's all this extra capacity coming from? Jared, Jared thought we had, he had a lot of infiltration of groundwater going into, into the system. I don't know, three hundred sixty-something, two, two-bedroom units. Gonna take a lot of sewerage, probably more than we already use.
Mm-hmm.
Where's it coming from? Why is it going there now? I'm just ki- I'm just concerned, I, I just don't know. You know, from a, from a, from a resident, someone who's been discussing sewerage, you know, Oxford-Rochdale Sewer District? It's mostly Oxford slash Leicester. It's not Oxford, the only part of Oxford is very North Oxford. That's the only part that is exposed to any sewerage that goes there. Yet they have a, they have a facility that's substandard, it doesn't do the appropriate thing. They were talking twenty years ago, they had to upgrade to a tertiary system? Way of, uh, processing the sewerage and they, they weren't, they didn't have that. They had tanks, they relied on evaporation and digging, uh, the waste out of some pits they had in their, their land back then. I don't know what they do now, I haven't been, never been down there, but again, the whole process of sewerage to me has been, has changed dramatically. I'm just wondering how that happened. If those that were on the board when they did the Ashworth Reserve, they were, they were gonna run a line across the Mass Pike and, and go to the, uh, Oxford-Rochdale Sewer District.
This is the first I've seen they're actually gonna go up the hill with everything before it was coming the other way. And also Thayer Pond was, that was new also, that, that, that was.
Wait a minute, what do you mean, doing from Route twenty up the hill?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Why would they pump, why would they go up the hill when it's right there on Route twenty, right? Isn't that a pump station that pumps it?
Yep.
No, but they, they're taking all that sewerage from up there.
Up above, yeah.
They, they're relying on that sewerage that mysteriously appeared. I thought for sure we were banging in, I thought a couple of years ago we were banging into the upper limits of what the basin transfer could be.
The water is going up the hill.
The water is going up there.
The sewer's gonna go the direction it usually goes.
Yeah, no, but.
I mean, that's what, that's the way it was when I went to college.
No, I meant more the water and also the Thayer, the Thayer Pond entrance was never on the table before either.
No, I'm surprised, that's a private road.
So. But I, yeah, I'm, I'm glad that the sewer is going in.
I was happy to hear that the whole Thayer Pond, we want a light thing is resolved, so.
Well, getting them to come through would drive up the numbers to get the light in.
Well, that's, that's the reason they're doing it.
Yeah.
But again, a lot of this is based on the state doing twenty over and that hasn't, that hasn't hap-.
Of course.
That's why I was more curious about when that actual signalized light does kick in. It, and then he's saying it's based on the amount of traffic and it's gonna be used to that.
When there's an update on the IMA with Auburn, happy to, to share.
If you can, we never hear anything about it. I know, I know it's a DPW thing, but I also heard in the past that we, we were pretty much maxed out on what we could transfer.
Yeah, and then it's an agreement that it's.
And then now, now, like I said, he talked about three hundred and sixty units, that he's gonna supply sewerage to Auburn.
And I thought at one point Aquarian was that way too, with, they were maxed out with how much water they could supply there, but.
I haven't heard that yet.
Not anymore, they're in it to make money, so I, you'll just pump more out of the ground, hope there's enough there.
If I've been here, they've never said no.
Yeah.
I don't think we have an issue with water, Aquarian, there's no capacity issue.
There was a, there were, there were supply line issues, they were supposed to put in twelve inch.
Yeah, the lines were, right.
Sewer is, of course, a little bit more delicate, right? And, um, and I know DPWs are gonna have ways to, to add more capacity in our existing system.
Yeah, but the whole idea behind this is to get, generate more commercial usage along Route twenty, not residential units on the top of a hill there, next door.
And he's right, originally they wanted to go across the Mass Pike with all this.
Different program, remember? So we got the Mass Works grant, um, that, um, previous director applied for, right? So we got the funding to make that connection through Auburn. Um, and it's not the only IMA we have too, we have one on the other side of town, um, R I P G is too. And those have to get reviewed, um, between both communities because there's development happening, um, uh, all over the area, right? And they need to be updated accordingly, so.
But, and I'm a firm believer, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be developing more sewers, they, sewer facilities, they should be expanding the ones they got.
But am I.
I thought, I thought Webster was totally underutilized.
Am I correct of saying that this, this sewer line is based on this, this construction, this, these pads and stuff like that? Is that originally where this came from? I thought we.
I heard, I heard there was, uh, structural issues with the existing line and they jumped in, they say they would help because of what they were gonna put in.
I don't know what the cap, I, I don't know what the calculations were based on, if they included the residential at the time. But I know that Jared looks at that, same thing with, um, you know, when there's a proposal at seven twenty, seven twenty-two Main Street, um, the implication of that. So, so we do, and it's all, this is forecasting over five, ten, we said perhaps fifteen years full buildup. Things will change, things will need to be upgraded. And we have to continuously look at opportunities to, whether it's expand or increase, however we wanna frame that.
But didn't they jump in and say they were going to do the upgrades? I thought that's.
That's correct.
He said he committed a half a million dollars.
So there's an MOU and, and as part of the public-private partnership for the Mass Works grant, two point eight million, um, they're putting in about five hundred thousand, they're putting in five hundred thousand. And so that's, you know, that's a, a major contribution to, to the work, so. But no question, no question, infrastructure is, is, is really, we know it's critical to anything we decide to do in the future, yeah.
No, I don't wanna put anything on the next meeting, it sounds like the next meeting's a bear, so.
We really have to meet over there. So looking at.
We may have to.
The, the senior center, right?
Senior center.
The next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it's, um, you saw, we, we had a, a good number here.
Well, I want to bring up this, uh, there's a, uh, a Zoom meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock. Notice a public information session, each one of you got those, open tonight. It's about, it's about the proposed logistics center and a lot of people rolling notes.
And, and that is, sorry, Tito, that is pertaining to the, um, to their MEEPER filing and as part of a requirement to con- to continue to do outreach, um, and so.
Do we have to, we have to address an R S P P or can we just log on?
You can log in.
Okay.
If you wish to do so.
I didn't think they would, uh, care.
If you wish to do so.
Okay. So if you're not doing it at the six o'clock, if you want to, you wanna see how the state, you wanna see how this, uh, person conducts his business? Go ahead, we'll probably be seeing him next week.
So they went through conservation already, but.
They're, they're currently going through the conservation process, so there's another meeting scheduled, um, for Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
And they will be going to the, um, Z V A, um.
When are they, when are they gonna televise those?
Conservation?
Yeah, how come they don't do conservation? Is it up to the board?
They've, conservation typically holds their meetings at DPW headquarters and I don't believe they have any video equipment there.
I don't understand, because I, I think I was talking to somebody on Facebook while I was like, whoa, you know, the town, town videotapes all their meetings, you can go get information, get ready for the next meeting. I went looking for the conservation meeting, like.
Is that the name for the conservation?
They, they just don't have the equipment.
No, but can't they have their meetings in here?